So I'd like to welcome everyone to the Falls Township Planning Commission meeting. I'd ask everyone to sign out their cell phones, but first we're gonna stand up and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to welcome everyone here today and everyone watching on YouTube. Our first, our item number one is Burns &amp; Burns LLC 100 Central Avenue, Pharaoh Hills, Tax map parcel number thirteen dash zero zero five dash zero nine seven, Zoned C.
Good evening. Mike McGinnis from Begley-Carlin here on behalf of the applicant, Burns &amp; Burns LLC. My client is the owner of the subject parcel, which is located at 100 Central Avenue in the township. The tax parcel number is thirteen dash double oh five dash zero nine seven, is located in the Highway Commercial District. I think you're probably familiar with the site. I printed off an aerial, but this property is located, is one of the parcels, series of parcels, behind the hospital. And this, if you're looking at the plan with the arrow, the building that we're here to discuss is the large building plan left. The parcel is situated behind one of the properties as owned and operated by Peruzzi. And if you go to the plan right, two of the buildings are owned by Burns Automotive, but then a little bit further to right, you can see just on the upper right corner of the aerial, that's the portion of the properties in that vicinity that are operated by CVA, just to orient everybody. The large, the larger of the two structures here is about twenty-eight hundred square feet. That's what we're here to discuss. Used to be utilized for mechanical repair. One of the buildings, also owned by Burns, that I just referenced on the adjoining parcel, was utilized in the past as a body shop. This particular application, which is a conditional use application, would be to permit Burns Automotive to use this existing structure, the one that we're referencing, the twenty-eight hundred square foot structure, accessory to the Burns Automotive use in the township to service vehicles. Paul's with me, he's gonna discuss the scope of that work in a second. We have no site work that is proposed. As you can see, the site is already improved, just high level. We're not gonna be utilizing the site with, you know, eighteen-wheelers. No one's gonna be coming in unloading vehicles. What would happen is a Burns Automotive customer would drop off a vehicle at a different Burns location. Those vehicles would then be transported by Burns employees to this site. We're estimating, I think approximately, three employees at this location.
Three to four.
Three to four. All the work that would occur with the vehicles would be located within the structure that's existing. The hours that we're approximating would be around eight to four, Monday to Friday. It's gonna be closed during the weekends. And then again, we have a review letter from Mr. Jones, and there's just a couple comments. It's pretty clean, but I would like Paul to give you a little bit of an overview about what he wants to do here, and then we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Good evening, gentlemen. Yes, it's just going to be a recon center for our commercial operation, probably anywhere from three to eight vehicles at a given time. There's only three garages in there, so we're limited to what the room we have anyway. Mechanical, cleaning, and some light paintwork going on on these commercial vehicles. Bucket trucks, some utility trucks, maybe some small cube vans, stuff like that.
And then you come in, anyone accessing this comes in off of Spencer. It basically ends, you make a left into this site, and then you utilize the building that we're discussing.
Yes, and the property's all fenced around, gated, secured. We lock it up and unlock it, you know, in the morning, lock it up at night.
And the other, only other comment or thing I would highlight, Paul, just to touch on, is you're aware, although there are a number of commercial industrial uses, there are a couple houses in the vicinity, and you've owned these parcels, multiple parcels here, so you're gonna continue to act as a good neighbor as part of this operation, correct?
Oh, absolutely, yes, for sure.
All right. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Uh, yes, so you're gonna do, you said light paintwork?
Yes.
I mean, are you not talking about repainting, you said it's only commercial vehicles, correct?
Yeah, strictly our own internal stuff. We're not doing any type of retail work or bringing work in outside, it's only for our own vehicles.
You're not planning on repainting, attract trailers or anything like that?
No, no, absolutely not.
Right. That was my only question. Any other board questions? Do we have any public comment? All right. Would you like to say anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use of Burns &amp; Burns LLC 100 Central Ave., Pharaoh Hills, PA, TMP thirteen dash zero zero five dash zero nine seven, Zoned Highway Commercial, JEA Project LD two five dash zero five, with compliance of Jones Engineering letter for March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
My second.
All right. Paul, do you wanna pull the board?
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
And I'm, myself is yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. All right. So let's move on to item number two. Laundry Properties, three sixteen to three twenty, West Trenton Avenue, Marshall, PA, Tax map parcel thirteen thirty-five dash zero three zero, and also zero three one, zoned NC. I'm back again.
I'm Mike McGinnis, on behalf of Laundry Properties LLC. I have Dan Marazo with me, who's the principal of the LLC, also John Richardson from DUMAC Engineering, who has prepared the site plan before you for consideration this evening. My client is the owner, the property's located at three sixteen, three twenty, West Trenton Avenue in the township. The tax parcels are thirteen dash thirty-five dash zero three zero, and thirteen dash thirty-five dash zero three one. These are two properties which we are proposing to redevelop and consolidate. They are located in the neighborhood Commercial District, and together aggregate to a little bit over one and a half acres. The properties are in between, I'm familiar with the West Trenton Avenue corridor, laundromat and a small commercial complex. They are currently improved with a couple structures that are in various states of disrepair. And if you're looking at the property from Trenton, and I guess I'll have John go through this in a second to orient you a little bit better, there are two principal structures, one on each parcel with two accessory structures, so there's four structures currently that are located. The buildings on the property to the left, if you're looking into the site from Trenton, are gonna get demolished as part of this development, so does the accessory structure that is on the right, and again, this will become a little bit clearer when we're referencing the site plan. And what we're proposing, and we discussed this a little, I guess a little less than a year ago with the zoning hearing board when we received a few variances, is a bit atypical, because we're looking at constructing what's basically gonna be a mixed-use product at the end of the day. So there'll be a small storage facility located to the rear of the property, which you can see, if you're looking at the rendering, it's gonna be behind those structures, basically shielded from view, so there's gonna be no view shed to the storage, driving on West Trenton Avenue, it's gonna be fenced, there's gonna be a tree buffer, and then we are going to do that in conjunction with relocated retail and residential use. So at the end of the day, you're really gonna have three different uses. You're gonna have a small residential use, there's gonna be four one-bedroom apartments, there's gonna be two small retail uses. We discussed at the zoning hearing board that the total square footage, looking at between a thousand square feet to twelve hundred fifty square feet for each, and I think we discussed at the ZHB, you know, maybe like a small barber shop, for example, coming in there, and then you have the storage units to the rear. We then have a existing structure on the far right that is going to remain, and that is going to be residential. The initial version of this, when it was proposed and presented to the township, I think was a little confusing, because there's a lot of moving pieces here. So we wanted to go through the time and expense of preparing some renderings. John, maybe we can walk through these together here. Just to show you that there's, this is gonna be done appropriately, it's gonna be in an aesthetic manner, it's in keeping with the west of the, the rest of the West Trenton Avenue development, and we think it's gonna be a better product, a better look at the end of the day, as compared to the existing improvements and the existing uses. We ended up going through a few revisions internally before we submitted. We got the review letter, which I think, again, for a product that has as many moving pieces as this, is pretty streamlined and minor. We only have three waivers that we're requesting. There was a comment regarding street trees, that's a will comply. Everything in the Jones Engineering Review Letter, other than the three waivers, are will complies. So we're gonna continue, obviously, to work with Doug and Joe and their team, and with that, I would like to turn this over to John to walk through briefly the site plan, and then, as I indicated, I have Dan Marazo here, who's happy to discuss his vision for the site, if you would like.
So before you, is the colored rendered version of the site plan that is part of your packet. As Mike was referring, the existing building that is to remain is this little building right here, that'll be used for residential. And then, these are the three mixed-use buildings, and the rear part of these two, and this entirety of this building, will be self-storage units. We're looking at roughly eighty-eight storage units, that's flexible, but it's roughly eighty-eight. And then, in front of these two storage buildings, those areas right there, will be retail on the first floor, and as Mike said, approximately a thousand to twelve hundred square feet. And on the second floor, it'll be two apartments per building for a total of four apartments. The site is currently already having access out to Trenton Road. We would formalize that driveway, which is a safety enhancement versus what's currently out there, essentially an unpermitted driveways. As Mike referenced, we'll be removing a building that sits right here, and right here, and this is the current building that sits right there. The site is pretty much open, except for there is wood in the rear, and a couple trees sporadically through the site. In order to provide stormwater management, we'll be doing a underground stone drywall, which is buried in the underground, you don't see it, it doesn't, it won't affect the surface or anything, won't become an eyesore, but we're doing a stone drywall in the front and in the back. There's existing storm in Trenton Road, those both systems will ultimately collect down and discharge out to the existing storm in Trenton Road. It won't be surface discharging out to someone else's property or anything like that, it'll be underground, out to the public right away. The self-storage units will have gates along here, so only people that are renting units will be able to access the rear of the site for safety purposes. It's one way in, or two ways in, one way out, for circulation purposes, keep it nice and simple and safe.
The only other thing I would point out is, commented about the view shed, when you combine the rendering that John has with some of the architectural renderings that we presented, you can see, if you're on West Trenton Avenue looking in, if you go back to the picture that we were discussing, you can't see into the storage, because they're blocked by the buildings that we have in the fencing. And then we're keeping, we're called the vegetated buffer, but there's significant foliage and a fence to the rear. So this part of the site is going to be not really viewable from pedestrian or vehicular traffic. And then, John mentioned this portion, the building that's remaining, that is going to be, continue to be operated just as a single-family detached residential dwelling. So that's basically the scope of the improvements we're proposing. Dan's gonna address you all in a second. The proposal, or our intended hours for the storage, would be shut from midnight to five in the morning. There's gonna be security features, cameras, et cetera. Dan, if you wanna just get up here and address the planning commission, but the rest of it, I think, is relatively straightforward.
Good evening, I'm Dan Marazo. Glad to answer any questions you have.
So the storage facility, how many employees are you planning on having there?
There may be only one, and typical modern ones, you can, you can rent these facilities using a QR code that's on the wall, and a credit card, and you may not need anybody. Now, obviously, you know, we'd have somebody there for maintenance, and, you know, control of trash and that type of thing, but maybe one.
Okay. You're not gonna have room enough for anybody to store any vehicles or anything, it'd just be people parking in front of their spot, doing what they have to do, and get out?
Absolutely. No RV storage, trucks, cars, anything like that, just basically, now, there will be car storage, but they'll be inside. There's a lot of folks out there looking for a one-car garage for, you know, whatever hot rod they might have.
Yep. Thank you. To your knowledge, in the back of the property where the storage facilities are going, have there been any flooding issues?
You know, I owned and ran the laundromat there for probably twenty-five years, and yeah, if you got a real heavy rain, you might see standing water for maybe a day or two, but after that, it kinda went away. So it didn't really affect the apartments in the back, and it didn't affect the laundromat, and of course, it didn't affect the houses that are in the front. So the answer's not that I've ever seen, just maybe a little standing water on a real torrential rain.
Thank you. And so you're gonna have two apartments in each building, and then you're also going to the house, is this gonna be a single-family dwelling, you're not gonna make that into a duplex or anything like that?
No, it's a, it's a single-family house. To be honest with you, when we did some renovations to it, and it kinda got away from us in a sense that we made it a little nicer than it should've been, and so I hate to knock it down, 'cause it's, you know, it's, it's really a nice house, and it's rented, and yeah, it kinda helps with the parking, just to have that, instead of an office or anything like that.
All right. Is there any public comment? Please state your name, for the record.
Jennifer Metzger, Falls Township resident. For the eighty-eight storage units, how is that gonna work with traffic, security, fire, fencing, all the things? 'Cause when we go to any other storage unit, there's like a fence before people drive in, so how is that gonna work? Is that like a business you're renting the eighty-eight storages to, or is it normal people? 'Cause you're saying that there's two entrances, but I only see one off of Trenton Road.
Oh.
Is it like a back entrance over there?
Oh.
Sorry.
So in the proposed condition, there's only one entrance, it's right here, and in terms of fencing, there's fence around the perimeter, and then there's gates that are located right there, there's three driveway entrances or exits. So that, that's your level of security. In terms of fire and everything, the plans will be reviewed by the towns, the Falls Township Building Code officials, and the fire marshal, to ensure that we comply with all of our requirements.
And so it looks on the plans like you have arrows pointing one in and two out?
Correct.
So are you going to, is there any way to regulate that, as far as your, at least to go in, right? You can put that gate, like you won't have a keypad or anything outside on the other two gates?
So normally how it would work would be, you would have a keypad outside of this gate for access, and then the other ones would be the kind of where you drive up to it, and it's automated, so when you come up to the backside of it, it would open.
So it'd be automatic, then, you wouldn't need anything to get out? Or it'd just be automatic? Okay. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, and then you're saying that you're gonna have one person for security on the grounds, is that one of the four apartments, that the person will always be on the grounds? Or is that security literally just when you're open? And if so, why are you giving more extended hours than any other location? Everyone else is like six AM to nine PM or ten PM, is there a reason why it would need to be twelve to five? Are you anticipating that this is gonna be contractors with like gas products that are in the storages? Like what, what's the plan there?
Please talk in front of the microphone, so everyone can hear.
We want to hear you.
Thank you. Typically, the hours are just, you know, when you have people that have cars, you try to eliminate traffic in the wee hours of the morning, so from say eleven or twelve o'clock, it would be locked, and you couldn't get access, either with, you know, a key card or dialing a combination. And then, you know, a lot of contractors start, you know, earlier than, than, you know, than seven o'clock, so if someone wants to get in and get tools for the day, we figured six o'clock would be a good, you know, even five thirty, six o'clock is a good time to have access.
So also, speaking of that, since if you're gonna be open, what, five AM till midnight, I believe it was?
Yeah.
What's the lighting situation? Are you gonna have lights just on the buildings, or are you gonna have lights, like, light posts?
Well, there'll be lights in the parking lot, and of course, lights around the facility itself, so for security, plus there's cameras. And then, again, you know, limited access in the, you know, in the early morning hours and late at night.
Well, I mean, you also have, you have neighbors across the street from your residential houses, so what's your plan to make sure that you don't, you know, you know, shine a spotlight in their house all night?
No, that's, that's understandable. The front is retail, so that would just have, you know, you know, normal lights for safety as far as walking around. Out back would be, you know, actual post lights for, you know, for, so you can...
Maybe pacing down?
We could direct them downward. One of the comments, I think, let me put to the review, there is a note, and John and his team are working with Joe and Doug, but there's a note that says, "Plans must be revised to assure the required zero-point-three-foot candle in all areas to be illuminated as required by the section of the ordinance." So we're aware, we can't have light spillage off the property, we wanna be able to split the difference between making sure that this is safe for people who will be accessing it at night, but not having any impact on any of the surrounding businesses or residential property owners. We can direct the lights down, and make sure that the lighting plan is sufficient for Doug and Joe before we move forward.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions?
What was the height of these buildings? Is this gonna be like a two-floor storage or a single floor? And then, I didn't catch the security, is the person staying on the grounds like public storage, or?
I don't think we plan on having like a caretaker's apartment. The tallest building will be less than twenty-five feet tall.
Ah.
And that's, no, I'm not talking about the security units, but that was for the storage units, we're talking about the retail apartment structure of the front, if I can go back, there is a height restriction of twenty-five feet. We did not ask for a variance for building height, because we plan on complying with the building height. So we're not talking about large buildings along the frontage, but you can see, what John was referencing, in terms of the gates and the material that we're proposing to use, we are attempting to, A, create a secure facility, but B, at the same time, have it be something that looks modern and appropriate. We're deleting, one of the conversation points at the zoning hearing board was, this is a commercial zone district, it's a non-complying site, it has four structures on it currently, we're deleting three of those four structures, and even if this is not exactly in keeping with the underlying section of the ordinance, we needed a use variance, we thought it was bringing it closer into the spirit and intent of the development along West Trenton Avenue.
I have a question about the security, maintenance, all-in-one employee. Are you gonna have, you said they're not gonna be there twenty-four-seven, what do they do, like nine to five, and then what would you do like later at night, have security company come through?
Well, yeah, typical working hours, obviously someone would be there, you know, to attend to the facility, clean up, that type of thing.
So you have somebody there from five AM till midnight every day?
Yes.
Okay.
So what were the three waivers, then? 'Cause you said everything else was pretty good, but there were just three waivers requested?
Mm-hmm. We have a waiver for preliminary, final, in tandem. We have a waiver, partial waiver for existing features, and we have a waiver request for woodlands disturbance. We are, as you can see with the plan, that Mr. Richardson prepared, we are keeping the buffer to the rear, but we are disturbing seventy-one percent of the woodlands, everything else is compliant.
What are the numbers on those waivers?
One ninety-one, eight B. One ninety-one, seventy-eight, C two. And one ninety-one, fifty-two, one, B four, B two.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Any more board comment or questions? Would you like to make a final statement?
We appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval for preliminary and final land development application for Laundry Properties, three sixteen dash three twenty, West Trenton Ave., TMP number thirteen dash zero three five dash zero three zero, and TMP number thirteen dash zero three five, zero three one, Zone Neighborhood Commercial, JEA Project LD two five dash zero four. number 13-035-031, Zone Neighborhood Commercial, JEA Project LD25-04. To comply with Jones Engineering, letter dated March 19th, 2025, and waivers 191-8B, which is your favorite, 191-521B4B2, 191-78C2, I believe that was it.
I know.
And the Remington Vernick Engineers' letter.
The traffic study.
Dated February 21st. For the traffic review. And the fire marshal recommendation letter.
All right, do we have a second?
Second motion.
All right. Pull the board, Paul.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
I am a yes?
Yes.
This time is a yes.
All right. Item number three has been continued per the applicant's request. So we'll go to item number four, Levittown Lanes, 8815, New Falls Road, Levittown, PA, tax town parcel 13-019-017, 13-099-168-001, and 13-019-169, Zone NC and NCR, for preliminary development.
Actually, just for a second, I'm gonna go back to that when we talk, just to show them. Sorry, we're gonna go back to the site plan in a second, but I think it's important before we get into this, just so you can see, we're gonna go back. This is the conceptual rendering that we've put together, because I think it's useful to understand the sort of product that we're trying to develop here. And then, sorry, Kristen, if I can flip back to the site plan. Thank you.
Welcome back again, Mr. Reddick.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Mike McGinnis here on behalf of Allen Mary Episcopo. The owner's 8815 New Falls Road. I'm referring to this, there's, there's three parcels, but they'll be referred to this evening singularly, which are separated by a dead-end street Orchard Drive. Combined, the properties total a little less than one and a half acres. And the portion of the property that you are, I'm assuming, most familiar with is the 0.86-acre piece, Kristen Holmes will detail this momentarily, which was tragically destroyed by a fire a couple of years ago and used to be home to Levittown Lanes. As you can see on the site plan, the other two parcels are across Orchard Drive and are improved by a large parking lot. This was the case when Levittown Lanes was in operation and would remain the case with this development, although we are making some improvements, I would suggest, from the pre-existing conditions. We went to the zoning hearing board a year ago and discussed how, sort of on its face, these are unique properties. They're split-zoned. You could see the NCR district and the NC district, the dividing line here that basically bisects the properties. You have three different parcels, but they're utilized in tandem with each other. What we're proposing to do is to construct a 24-unit market-rate apartment complex. My clients, and I'm gonna have Mr. Episcopo address the planning commission in a minute, pouring and investing all of their savings and hopes in the future into this site, because they have operated and been involved with this property for over 50 years. We are significantly reducing the impervious surface coverage as part of this application. We are improving what will be the stormwater flow off of the site because of the reduction of impervious. We're designing the apartment complex to be high-end, significant expenditures, and that's why I wanted to show the rendering at the outset, because it shows our vision for the site after the development is hopefully approved, and then the site is subsequently improved. It was discussed at length at the zoning hearing board, and there were a number of neighbors who were present at that point, and there was a petition that was submitted to the zoning hearing board, which was considered before the zoning hearing board granted approval for a variance, about how my clients would have loved nothing more than to continue to operate Levittown Lanes forever. But that's not possible, and it's not possible to underwrite and reconstruct a bowling alley and a bar and a restaurant at the site. So the question became, what do you do to make reasonable productive use of this property in a way that we think is beneficial to the community? This, if any of the board members aren't familiar, it's worth reiterating, Levittown Lanes was a bowling alley and a pizzeria, and sold alcohol, and there was a dumpster to the rear, and was open at 2:00 in the morning, and the parking still occurred across the street. So one of the items that was discussed at the zoning hearing board obviously relates to potential impacts. And by all metrics, both in terms of impervious, stormwater, hours of operation, noise, traffic generated, this use was going to be significantly less of an impact, significantly less of a negative impact on the residential community that is around us. And that, again, we volunteered a condition, we agreed to it, and we will certainly work with Ms. Gallagher's office. After the development hopefully is approved, we will deed restrict the parcels to the plan right. So rather than developing a commercial use on the site where you see the apartment complex, and then a second development on Orchard, we are going to deed restrict the Orchard properties, the parking lot properties, so they can only be used accessory in tandem with the apartment complex in perpetuity. We're also fine putting in the deed restriction. They can't be subleased, they can't be utilized in the future for off-site parking for anything else. They are just going to be parking spaces that are going to be utilized for renters at this site. We have 70 parking spaces, which is a lot for 24 units, so we're not gonna have an issue with parking here. We are working with Remington Vernick to make sure that the pedestrian crossings are safe, and you can see the crosswalks that are depicted. And again, this was something that was occurring in terms of people parking across the street and then traversing Orchard to access the bowling alley. We, you know, we made a, probably a long-winded speech, that it's an odd site, it's gonna continue to be an odd site after this development, just by the nature of how it's created. But we really think this is a really good development. And my clients, not to criticize people who come in from other parts of the country to develop, if you have a question about how this is gonna be done and how this is gonna be managed, people who have run this site for 50 years are going to continue to run in the future. This is gonna be family-owned and operated, and they have an investment in a monetary, but an emotional stake in making sure that this is something that the community is proud about after it's constructed. So what I'd like to do is have Mr. Episcopo just come up and explain what he's looking to do here, and then have Kristen go through the site plan, and then we will walk through the Jones Engineering review letter if we could. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I'm Allen Episcopo, the owner of the property. I've been in business in Levittown for, since 1962. I get along with the community quite well. I don't have any problems with the community. I like the community. We had unfortunate fire, created a problem. Working at the business for 60 years, building something for our family. I'm not a great speaker, but this was, this work was done to create a business for our family to keep on going over the years. Now, the apartment building is new to us. We want to put up a nice building that the township could appreciate. And when we looked into building it, we just said, if we're gonna put a building up, we want it very nice and, and be a benefit to the community. So all I'm asking is for the board to understand, we're just looking to just stay in business in Falls Township. I thank you for your telling.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I think Mike did a pretty detailed review of the site plan and the layout itself, but just some clarification points. We do have the proposed three-story apartment building on the, what I'll call the main parcel, but on the left plan view, with a smaller parking lot to the rear of that building with direct access to the rear of the building, and then the larger parking lot across Orchard Drive for additional parking. There are 70 spaces, as Mike noted, which is the zoning requirement for the units, which includes the spaces per unit and spillover parking spaces. So it's almost about three spaces per unit for each apartment here. We are doing a significant reduction in impervious of about 32% reduction overall on the property, adding greening, green plantings throughout along the perimeter of all sides, street trees, parking lot landscaping, and so forth. So it'll be a nice greener parking area as well as building and facade along the street frontages. We do have a host of waivers that we are requesting, and we certainly did get the review letters from Jones Engineering, as well as Remington and Vernick, and are working through those. Everything within the Jones letter is or will comply, with the exception of the waivers that we are requesting tonight. So I can certainly go through those one by one. And if you prefer to use it in order of the Jones letter or our waiver request letter, I could do either.
The Jones letter, if you don't mind.
Yep. So starting with the subdivision and land development section of their comments, the first is Section 19136D, which we are requesting a waiver, which requires a 12-foot separation between driveways and property lines and curbing of those internal driveways. One of the things that Mike noted is there are a lot of unique situations here on these three parcels, and a lot of non-conformities that exist. So we've been working with those non-conformities and trying to improve them with this development. So this waiver is one of a few of our waiver requests that have to do with the way the parking lot is laid out, the driveways are laid out today, and trying to improve those. But a waiver is being requested because the existing conditions do not provide that separation from the property The next is Section 19137B, which is, again, a similar request from providing a 12-foot separation between driveways and property lines and providing curbing on the internal drives. So the existing condition out here is that there is no curbing throughout the parking area and the streets. There's no curbing along Orchard Drive, so we are maintaining that condition in order to allow drainage to continue the patterns that it does today, while improving it with adding the greenery and more pervious throughout the property. Section 19137F, we're requesting a waiver to permit zero setback to the ultimate right-of-way for parking facilities. And again, this has to do with the non-conformity for the parking lot on the right parcels. They today abut directly to Orchard Drive with no separation. We are improving the situation by pushing those parking spaces further from the roadway itself, and also in working with Remington and Vernick, providing a striped walkway and crosswalks along that facade to prevent and provide a barrier between the actual parking spaces and the roadway of Orchard. We have Section 19137G2, requesting a partial waiver, which requires shade trees in curbed, raised planting beds. We're requesting to allow shrubs in some of those islands in order to allow light poles and site lighting to exist without trees conflicting with those. And also, again, to not provide curbing in the islands because of what I've just mentioned. 19137G4 is a partial waiver from requiring plantings around off-street parking and loading areas. We are just shy of the requirement, but have planted trees in all of the available locations that we have. And there is some existing vegetation to remain along the right side of the parking lot. We have, the next comment in the review letter is a will comply, 19138B, so that's not an issue, will comply with that requirement. The next is 19139G and 61A. We're requesting a waiver that requires sidewalks to be installed along both sides of the existing street. So we are proposing true concrete sidewalk along the New Falls Road frontage and along the Orchard Drive frontage where the apartment building is, but on the opposite side of Orchard Drive where we have the bigger parking lot, because there is no separation there or islands today, we did, in working with Remington and Vernick, are providing that striped walkway along the frontage. So there is a pedestrian path, just not a sidewalk. Section 19144D, we're requesting a waiver to allow grading within five feet of the property lines. And again, this property is entirely developed up to the property line, so we need that in order to redevelop. The next comment is a will comply regarding drainage. We will work with Jones Engineering for that.
44G is a will comply?
Yes.
Okay.
48B, we're requesting a partial waiver from providing the total required street trees. And again, we are providing what we can along that facade. We are shy by a few street trees along there, and we're working with site triangles, site distances with the different intersections that we have along the frontage. And just the following note is the same section under 48, but 48D, we will comply with the requirements for site triangles and plantings. Section 52 is a will comply. 62A, we're requesting a waiver, again, from requiring curbing along Orchard Drive, same as the previous, but just based on existing conditions. Section 64 is a will comply for will serve letters. 64B, complying with the fire marshal. We did already respond to those and address those comments, but we will comply with any fire marshal comments. 78C2 is a waiver request requiring 200-foot overlap surrounding the property. We have provided an aerial for that overlap and will comply with any requests that the Jones Engineering office has for that.
78C2 is a will comply, correct?
Which one, I'm sorry?
Sorry, 19178C2, that's a will comply as well, right?
78C2 is a waiver. That's the one I just went through.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's the existing features.
Yeah.
The overlap.
All right.
And then the last two in the review letter are will complies. Same with the stormwater management requirements.
The only thing, again, I don't mean to probably be redundant here, but going through that list, I think almost all of the waivers fall into one of two categories. They either relate to the fact that we're dealing with three parcels that are substantially improved, and we're doing what we can based upon existing conditions, or we're dealing with waivers that relate to the fact that we are only partially seeking relief because we are complying to the greatest extent possible with the site layout for things like sidewalk or street trees. So there aren't any examples of waivers where we're just neglecting to provide them out of financial expediency. They're either existing conditions, or we're maximizing what we can do and are asking for partial relief.
So you said about, you wanna, you just wanna stripe the, have a striped pedestrian path? Is there a specific reason why you do not want to put a sidewalk in there?
So if you look at the alignment and orientation of the parking on that lot on the right side, it is aligned so that those spaces are running perpendicular to Orchard Drive, rather than where you would often see off of a road, a planted island strip with sidewalk along there. So I'm gonna zoom in a little on this. And we did coordinate with Remington and Vernick after their first review letter, and again, since we resubmitted, the suggestion was that we have a striped walkway that runs north-south along Orchard Drive along here. We do still have at least another five-foot separation to the parking stalls themselves. And then we have a gore striping, a budding, that's- And then we have a gore striping, a budding that striped sidewalk so that the vehicles running down Orchard know that there is that separation to the pedestrians. So the, the main reason is because that is existing impervious today with parking, and we're just trying to improve the situation but allow that pedestrian connectivity.
And exactly what you're planning to light up, the walkway going across Orchard?
Yes, yes. So we will comply with all of the lighting requirements. There are some sight lights in the parking lot as well as some building lights on the apartment building.
All right. Any other board questions? We'll open up the public comment. Would anyone like to speak? Just state your name again for the record, please.
Jennifer Metzger, Falls resident. This is a nice family, and we all, you know, our heart broke for them when this happened. So we like that they're trying to stay in the neighborhood and do all the things. So this is amazing. We appreciate the list you put together because it tells me you really tried. So now I have a hundred questions. Can you tell me what the two squares are on New Falls Road? They look like concrete pads that are to the side of the building.
Yeah, so that's just part of the amenity spaces for the residents, just some areas to either gather or sit outside. There may be some benches that'll be worked out along there, but just some additional walkway and pedestrian area.
Okay, so that's something that would be aesthetic. You know, it's something that, that's what we're actually going to see, right?
Correct.
So, our concern, I guess, is if we're looking at these properties, you're going to do this in perpetuity. So we want to get it right the first time, right? Because you're going to keep these exactly as we see it. What is the height of that building? When you say three stories, I think 30 feet, you think?
It is 48 feet. 48 feet, three stories. That was part of the zoning relief that we obtained with the zoning hearing board last year.
So, we call your attention to Brzezinski, which was last February, it's just a month ago. They said only two stories would be allowed based on the height restrictions, and that's on Lincoln Highway. This is New Falls Road. So we asked that that be looked at. 48 feet's not acceptable on New Falls Road.
Well, I understand your concern, but the zoning board gave them a waiver. That's a completely different board that does.
But that wasn't presented here, and that's not appropriate. We've already covered it with other locations. Even the zoning board for the February 13th minutes specifically says that you can't go to 50 feet in this area. It's not acceptable. So why would they be allowed a three, why would they be allowing a three-level apartment building here on New Falls Road in a community when they're not allowing more than two levels on Lincoln Highway, which is zoned commercial?
Okay, so you just said you're not allowed to go above 50 feet. I believe the height of the building is 48 feet?
Yes.
We're asking you to keep it to two levels, not three. If they're not doing it on Lincoln Highway, why would they do it here? It's the same zoning board. So we're asking you, for your recommendations that you're handing up, to tell them two levels. We're trying to keep this area preserved. And so, at this point, we would love for them to be able to do this, but we do think that it should be at two levels.
I, I understand your concern, but you also believe that, you also got to understand that another board that is quasi-judicial board already approved this. So we, if the board chose, we could put a comment in there, but, and also at the same point, we are an advisory board. So the Board of Supervisors just take what we recommend under advisement. It's not, we can't, we could ask them to keep it to two stories, but it's not like written in stone if we do. I just wanted to let you know that.
I understand, but a story's 10 feet. And so, three stories being 48 feet, that's not, that's not realistic. And if I have to pull up the law for Falls Township, I can do that, and I'll bring it to the next meeting.
So you said a story's 10-foot? That, I mean, I work in construction, and honestly, it just depends on the design. And they have different, I've seen 19-foot, you know, for a story, so it's.
You've seen it, but we're trying to keep this a residential neighborhood, right? We're all trying to preserve it. That's why we're all here. So we're asking you to at least pass the comment up. We also want to know if there's going to be any other components on the roof. HVAC, like how that's going to be dealt with. And then, since none of the setbacks or anything are going to be done, is it really necessary for all 70 spaces for the parking to stay parking? Or is it something that they can do so it's at least more trees or brush or shrubs in that space?
Yeah, so I'm going to flip back to the building rendering just to provide the architectural again for this. So there is nothing proposed for rooftop units. It's a sloped roof along here, so that contributes to the building height.
And is this the 48 feet or is that the 48?
It would be, I believe, to the peak or to the mean of the roof.
Mr. Henderson commented on it, but one of the variances that we specifically sought and were granted at the zoning hearing board was to permit a three-story building, parentheses, 48 feet to roof peak. And that was a variance that was granted by the zoning hearing board. The reason we have 70 spaces is not because we believe we need 70 spaces. We're trying to maximize the green space. Just like we were talking about with zoning, there is a parking requirement that correlates to this structure that requires us to have 70 parking spaces. So if we don't have 70 parking spaces on site, we would have to go to the zoning hearing board to get relief. So that portion of it is not, was not elective on our part. That was complying with the underlying zoning regulations.
What date was that granted?
I believe it was March, March of last year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
April, I think April night.
Yep, Diane.
Is there any other public comment? Okay. Do you have any more board comment? Did I make any final statements, Mr. McGuinness?
No, we're just, we're happy to continue to communicate with neighbors and keep them involved to the extent they're interested. But we need the height, obviously, for the financial component to make this viable. We have a constrained site here. So to be complying with zoning and to build and have 24 units, which is what we need here. That's why we have the 48 feet. But we're doing it in a way that we think is in keeping, I think, the adjoining properties, three stories. So, that's all I would submit. Thank you.
All right. All right, do we have a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion for approval for preliminary and final land development. Application for Levittown Lanes redevelopment, TMP 13-019-167, TMP 13-019-169, and TMP 13-168-001, zoned neighborhood commercial, neighborhood commercial residential district, JEA Project LD24-14, to comply with Jones Engineering letter dated March 19th, 2025, with waivers, 191-37B, 191-37F, a partial waiver for 191-37G4, 191-39G, and 191-61A, 191-44D, and also a partial waiver for 191-48B, 191-62A, I think that covers all the waivers.
I believe it does, yes.
And to also follow the, to comply with the Traffic Engineers Review Letter. And the Fire Marshal Letter.
All right, do we have a second?
Second motion.
Paul, hold the board.
Mr. Coy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. And Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Very much. Have a great night.
All right, now we have item number five. Silcooner, 1035 to 1056 Trenton Road, FLSPA. Taxant parcel, excuse me, taxant parcel 13-020-149 through 153, zoned NCLR. Now, this is just a sketch plan, so we, we will not be taking a vote. This is just more for information for the public.
Thank you very much. I'm John Van Louvene from Eastburn and Gray, representing the owners of these parcels. Mark Havers from Pickering Courts, and Somerson is the project engineer. And this is, as you just indicated, a sketch plan. Actually, by way of background, and I'll get through this in a minute, but we're really here to discuss the ordinance that was submitted with the sketch plan. The sketch plan is illustrative of a proposed ordinance, an overlay ordinance, to, that would be, could be applied to the five parcels that are included here. I'm assuming that you did get the overlay ordinance because it was mentioned extensively in the Jones Engineering letter commenting on our sketch plan. By way of background, the members of the Sil Hopkins family own the five parcels. Ms. Joy Hopkins, Ms. Sil Hopkins, has her office there on the corner. I'm sure you know the property. Next to it, along Trenton Road, are three single-family detached houses. That, those four parcels are zoned neighborhood commercial. There's a fifth parcel, very irregular, along Tiberan Road, which is zoned LR. Mark, do you have any? All right, go ahead. Let my AV assistant take over here for a second. We have a, an overlay that we can put up here for you.
I can't tell how to zoom. Where's the zoom?
So if you want to go full screen, oh no, this one right here. Full screen.
Can you zoom still?
All right, now we have the, the existing. And you can see the, on the left side are the, is the Trenton Road frontage, the corner, the office building, the three houses that are very close to Trenton Road. And then the irregularly shaped parcel along Tiberan Road is currently vacant. That's zoned LR, Low Density Residential. By way of background, beginning in 2019, before I was involved in the process, Ms. Sil Hopkins and her then attorney, Tom Hecker, unfortunately not with us any longer, had a preliminary meeting with his staff and two members of the Board of Supervisors to discuss a plan at that time for 120 apartments on this corner. And I can't speak for the, as to exactly what happened, but my client was present, and she said that they were encouraged to proceed. Unfortunately, Mr. Hecker died a few months later. COVID came in three or four months after that, and the project essentially sat for a year or so. Beginning in January of 2023, we began to essentially resurrect the project. At that time, I became involved and we had conversation with Matt Tequita, preliminary conversation. Sent him a preliminary plan. I think back then, the number was something like Sketch Plan 12. We're now on Sketch Plan 38. That's how many iterations we've gone through here. At that time, Matt advised me that he had preliminarily discussed the plan with the Board of Supervisors. Again, these are all informal. There was nothing formal submitted at that point. And indicated that the board would be willing to consider an overlay for the use. At that point, the apartment use. We spent some time after that going through a number of iterations, reducing the density to some extent. Over the rest of that year, developing a proposed ordinance. And in March of 2024, I submitted a package of material, informally again, to Mr. Tequita for review, informal comment from the, from the board. Over the course of the, of 2024, then, we did have a meeting. That, that plan was reviewed then by Jones Engineering in her first review, which I believe was issued last September. We had had, again, at least one meeting with the township staff. In November of last year, November 4, I think it was, we had a meeting with, two of the supervisors attended. By that time, we had reduced the density to 94, I think it was 94 apartments, if I recall correctly. We also brought to that meeting a sketch plan for 54 townhouses as an alternative. The plan you have tonight is with some very minor tweaks, the plan that we showed to the board and to, to board members and to the staff in, on November 4. Mark, can we put that up a minute, please? This is kind of a rough-colored rendering of the project as we have, as we showed it to the staff in November. At that time, we expressed an interest in, again, continuing our effort to obtain as many preliminary comments as possible before filing a formal petition for amendment to the zoning ordinance, which would then go to Bucks County Planning Commission, come back to this planning commission, and be scheduled for public hearing. We thought, and the township staff had agreed with us, that it made more sense to, to gather comments before we, and take in to consideration as many comments as we could before we made a formal submission. That's why you see a townhouse plan instead of an apartment plan in front of you today. We feel that consideration of a zoning amendment on this corner is appropriate. You know your township very well, and I'm sure you know the area along Trenton Road. You know what's there as far as the existing commercial uses, what that neighborhood looks like. We felt that this plan would provide an appropriate, perhaps, economic stimulus to the redevelopment of that area. It would also provide some housing, which I think is still in demand in this, this area. Of course, all through Bucks County, that is probably the case. But we think this is a good product that has the potential, with the mass of the project, to encourage the redevelopment of adjacent sites. And that the overlay is an appropriate way to do it. That was an issue that we had discussed with the staff early on. And again, as I said, we received some encouragement. But I don't believe the Planning Commission, at least formally, has ever seen any of these proposals or any of the sketch plans that I've referred to. As I said, this one is number 58, I believe. So what we're here for generally, and we appreciate the Jones Engineering letter, it, it gives us, again, a lot of focus when we, before we can fine-tune our ordinance and before we submit it. But we would also welcome the preliminary comments of the Planning Commission. Obviously, there's nothing formal before you for review, but we'd like to know what you think of the use, what you think of the townhouse concept, what, you know, your general comments. We, density was obviously a concern originally. We reduced the plan, and then we had to go even further in order to increase the parking up to the. We reduced the plan, and then we had to go even further in order to increase the parking up to the false township standards. Notwithstanding my best efforts to convince the township that those standards are, are too high and should be modified. I provided a lot of evidence of that, but we've given in on that point, and we think this plan will meet your parking requirements, the three units per, per residential unit. And, uh, now we're just down to the point of does, does it make sense to encourage this kind of redevelopment on this corner? What do you think about that? What do you think about the, the fifty-four townhouses? Which is a maximum density as we proposed it in our ordinance. It would be, uh, could give as many as sixty, but fifteen is what we ordinance proposes. We don't really need more than fifty-four. That's what we're asking for. The site's going to be expensive to redevelop. You probably have heard enough people tell you that you need a certain mass to make a project marketable. We have a location here with two major highways that I think, uh, suggests that this is not an area where you're going to sell seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar townhouses on this corner. And we need a certain amount of density to justify the development costs that are going to be inherent in this project. We don't anticipate and won't be asking for relief from any stormwater requirements. I mean, there's not much there in the corner, in this area of stormwater management. We know that's a critical issue in every municipality today. We're all playing catch-up from years of development without stormwater management. So we know that's critical, and we intend to work with Jones Engineering on all of those points. We haven't done full engineering yet. We don't have the enabling legislation to permit us to do that. So we need to put the ordinance in place first before we do the, the engineering, and then we'll see whether we can accomplish what we've shown here in concept. Mr. Havers has done a lot of background work. He thinks, he tells us that it's, in his opinion, it's feasible to do what we've shown you here and meet the stormwater requirements. But it's our job. We know we have a lot of studies that will need to be submitted. They were all itemized in the Jones Engineering Review Letter. Uh, and again, uh, trying to do those studies without having the zoning in place really doesn't, doesn't make much sense. So the first thing we try to do is, does the use make sense? After we're, have the opportunity to discuss it with you, we intend to discuss it with the full Board and get their feelings also. And then, uh, we hope to be able to proceed with a formal petition for an amendment to the zoning ordinance to go through the formal review process.
Any, any more comment?
Thank you. I'm sorry, we also have the renderings here. I apologize. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, Calvin, they're on here too.
Would anyone in, uh, would anyone in the public like a copy of this? I can share with you guys if you want.
Well, they're all up, they're all up here too.
Ah, okay.
You can take them home with you now.
Thank you.
So.
John, did you?
What?
I just didn't know if you had anything else to say.
Well, obviously, this is the, kind of a side shot. These, this is all done to scale. This is an accurate rendering of the plan. In fact, it probably gives you a better, uh, idea of what the project would look like than that colored-in aerial. This is obviously done professionally, and I think it gives you a very good picture of what the corner would look like as it's developed. Mark, anyone, we have a couple others. We'll take you through so the audience can see the five that we've handed up to you folks. Uh, this is just kind of a close-up, if coming in a little closer from the shot, for a parcel portion of the site that you saw before, a little bit, uh, smaller. But this is the concept. These are the type of units that would be developed. The garage is underneath, uh, the two-story living, this area. Mark, third. This is a Trenton Road entrance that we're looking into the project from Trenton Road at this point. And this is the Tiberan Road view from up in the air, obviously, not from car height. But, uh, it should give you an idea of what we're trying to accomplish here, why we think that it frankly would provide a very nice little gateway coming into that intersection, that area from the, from Trenton Road and Tiberan Road. I think it's an improvement, certainly, over what's there now. And I think we can do a very nice job and put a very high-quality product on the site. Is there one more, Mark, or not? Okay, so, yeah, that's it. That's good. All right. And that's basically it. If the Board or if the Planning Commission would indulge us, uh, my client, Joyce, Joyce Silh Hopkins, would like to give you a little, I think, background from her perspective and her family's perspective. Would you accept that before you give me your comments back again?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to say a quick hello. Thank you for having us, and I, my three children.
Sorry, could you speak into the microphone? Sorry about that.
I'm Joy, and my three children are here with me as well, Westy, Calvin, and Joy Eileen. And it was kind of interesting when the Episcopal family spoke, our stories are very similar. You know, we're multi-generational here, and we've been on this corner since nineteen sixty-three. So it's always been a dream of my parents and then myself and now with my children to develop the corner. So we want to do something nice, make it look a lot nicer than it currently does. And we think that if everyone agrees that townhouses would be an appropriate alternative, we could make it look a whole lot nicer than some of the other options. And, uh, so we're just looking for your feedback and hopefully your support. That's, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just say something. One of the concerns I have is the, uh, the drainage, the impervious surface that you're creating with the parking lots and with the buildings itself. As that's, that current property is mostly wooded. Am I correct?
The back part of it is mostly, it's mostly just gray. It's vacant, but it's not wooded. We can go back, Mark. How do we get back to the area?
It's okay. They, they know. It's, the plan would be full underground stormwater management as well as some above-ground stormwater.
That we have to work out with Jones Engineering. We know that their preference is above ground. They've made that clear to us preliminarily, and I know Mr. Havers has area on this latest plan for above ground. Yeah.
Well, actually, I think the piggyback question on that one. So is there any, when there's rain, is there any flooding in the back currently, uh, or, or you don't know?
No, 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 there's no flood. There's pooling.
You got, sorry. You got, sorry, this, this is being broadcast on YouTube as well, so.
Okay.
People, if some people at home are watching, the only way they can hear it is through the microphone.
Okay, no, no flooding in the back. There is some pooling of water, and then it dissipates, you know, the next day. So that's not a problem.
When you, when you say pooling, the pooling stays on the site and then infiltrates?
Yeah, like if there's a divot, you know, it fills up, and then it dissipates.
What I'm saying is it doesn't go off-site.
No.
Okay. Any, any more questions or comments?
Just in the rendering, there's some other buildings over here, other, that are, weren't on a draft.
That's the adjoining property, Strip Center, and that was just the way the architect was recommending they improve that, so.
Looks to me like it might be an optimistic view of that site.
Actually, I, I was wondering the same thing, too. It's like a creative licensing in there, right? I mean, I. I mean, I have problems with the fact that there's going to be almost no backyardage, whatever, so. And, um, I mean, like, as a dog owner and stuff like that, I like to see, uh, stuff like, you know, but, um, you know, and, and, or you got some backyards that are like backing up to Trenton and all that, you know, Trenton Road and Tiberan Road. So, I mean, I understand what you want to do. I just, me personally, I think it's a bit much. I think you can just do a few less, you know, get a little more room, uh, you know what I mean? So that'd be my, my one basic comment.
Do you have any issue with the townhouse pro, idea at this location?
I, I mean, my opinion, uh, this, for this going to be developed, I mean, townhouses in general. I mean, we need more housing in this country, so it's not always a bad idea. But I just think it's, uh, a lot for this parcel. I mean, I think you can lower the house a little bit, give a little more room, get a little bit further away from Trenton Road and Tiberan Road. And, uh, but, I mean, like I said, that's just my opinion.
No, I understand, but that's why we're here. To solicit your opinions, so that's.
So you would also have each townhome would have their own garage, one-car garage shows, right? And then, um, would there be parking enough for in front of a townhouse too? Is that what the plan is?
So it was originally going to be, uh, two-car garages, but instead now we have one-car garage bay with two driveways.
Double-wide driveways.
Yes, so they'll be adequate for any sized vehicle. And then there's also one guest space built into the sketch for each townhome. So we've done it to comply with staying with three parking spaces per townhouse as well as keeping the number of units under the fifteen townhouse per acre currently in the township.
And what is the potential SWM area? Is that swim?
Stormwater management. Yeah, yeah, no, that's stormwater management, above ground, all these various places, as well as whatever combination we would require underground.
Makes more sense.
Um, do we have any public comment?
Jennifer Metzger, Falls resident. We're concerned about traffic, security, having a garage under a home, not great. Are these fifty-five plus?
No.
No? Okay, and then?
Hold on, uh, I didn't, we didn't hear the answer to that question.
Oh, sorry.
The answer to that is no. They would not be age-qualified.
Okay.
More kids, need a bigger school. Oh, that brings me to water. We have a major water problem on Hood Boulevard. Can't do the school. How are they going to deal with the water here? They're saying that they're not having drainage issues, but we have pooling too. The pooling is pretty significant throughout the area. And whenever we drive past this, there's actually a huge amount of land that looks like it's pretty low, and we have all the creeks and everything in that area behind it. And then where's the two offices? Is that the single standing?
So the small building to the left in the front is the one office. The small building to the far right is the other office. And then everything else that you're looking at is townhomes. Fifty-four townhomes are proposed in two offices in just under four point three seven acres. Did I answer? Okay.
Um, so it's all the black curves that we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Okay, and how tall are those?
Three stories.
No.
There are three stories.
Please define three stories.
It hasn't been designed yet. It hasn't been designed yet, to be honest with you. My guess is they'll be under order thirty-five plus or minus feet, but they haven't, the roof lines, nothing's been designed yet.
So you said thirty-five plus or minus, so it'd be anywhere from thirty-five to forty-three feet? Is that what you're roughly saying? I mean, I understand it's not, you don't have it completely designed yet.
Correct. I think the ordinance proposed forty-five, um, but we just weren't really sure how the roof lines would work yet. We haven't gotten to that point yet.
And if you went to forty-five, you would get, need to get relief from zoning, correct?
The overlay accounted, the, the overlay proposes forty-five feet.
Okay.
As a height.
All right. Um, I do actually have one comment for Jennifer. Uh, so I, I live in Rock Creek Run, and we have a gra, uh, so we have a garage, and we have a, a bedroom above it. It's not really an issue. So I just wanted to say, you know what I mean, it's, it, obviously, it's allowed in the township, so.
A lot of things are allowed in the township. So right now, I guess my only concern is, is with those offices, is that going to stay in the family? And the rest of the property will be sold off? Were you going to stay?
Thank you for asking. So, uh, since we've been there my whole life, and, uh, I, I would like to continue with the office owned between myself and my children, and yes, we would each like to have a home here. So we will stay in that regard, and other than that, they will be sold, uh, as townships for people to own their own homes.
And then I'm guessing that the zoning, since it's low density, that's one of the things you're going to request to change?
The overlay district, where most of the area in dimensional criteria will be set differently because of the, well, we got a unique site. It's kind of got some challenges for development and our criteria. And the Jones Engineering Review commented, commented on a number of those issues. There was a comparison, it's there for anybody to see, uh, comparison between some of the existing districts. And then some comments about what would have to be done in subdivision and land development by way of studies, traffic, uh, environmental impact, all of the things that you would normally expect to see at a, with a development of this size. But we've tried to do the area dimensional criteria. We have developed, frankly, and we have not compared them to every other zoning district in the township. We know that there are, are differences. We know you have one district, your high-density residential district, in which you could theoretically do twenty townhouses to the acre. You have another one where you have ten as a maximum with larger buffers. On a corner like this, with the back, with the shape of this property, large setbacks really are not feasible. But if you look at an aerial of what exists there today, you'll see that there are virtually no setbacks along Trenton Road as there is today. There are also a number of properties along that stretch that are, probably have higher than seventy-five percent impervious surface ratios, probably without any stormwater management. So we know we have to comply with all of the current requirements, which, if anything, should be a benefit to anybody in the immediate vicinity.
Well, I, so speaking of the setbacks real quick, so you're going to be thirty, uh, the closest property would be, off of Trenton Road, would be thirty foot, uh, to the, uh, road, to the right-of-way, or to the road?
Off of, I'm, I'm sorry, I think off of Trenton Road, I believe it's thirty. It's closer along Tiberan.
Well, I mean, according to here, it's, it's fifteen, and it looks like it's fifteen. It's kind of, um, yeah.
It's fifteen to the ultimate right-of-way, to the legal right-of-way. It's probably twenty-five feet to the road itself. It's probably thirty.
Also, uh, what's the distance off of, uh, Tiberan? Because I don't have, uh, you only have ten foot.
It's ten foot to the right-of-way. The, out to the road's probably another thirty feet to the.
Okay, so that'd be an initial thirty feet on.
To where the road physically is. From the right-of-way line, it's ten feet.
Gotcha, okay.
Both of these roads have very substantial ultimate rights-of-way, which is what the setbacks are normally measured from. So in that respect, uh, it sounds like eight feet isn't very much, but when you think in the consideration of the width of the ultimate right-of-way, it becomes a much more reasonable setback to the cartway, as is illustrated here for.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, you can continue, please.
No, you've been wonderful. Um, my concern is, it, there's no green space. We're talking about little kids. Like, is this something where you're going to put fencing there? Is it something where, since we don't have setbacks because it is commercial property? I'm, I'm just looking at even the way that the, you know, turn-ins are. Like, if there's a fire or something on that farthest end, how do we know that going in through Tiberan Road where it's busy is going to make sense, and then you see that it's cut off? So if they turn in, you know, to this first turn-in, they're only covering those few homes. Do you know what I mean? Like, I, I just, the traffic study is going to be one issue, but I think that some of the way that it's set for you to turn in and everything else may not make a lot of sense, and not having backyards or having any space if this really is for little kids. I mean, it's Tiberan Road. Like, it's already dark and it's already crazy busy. Forget Trenton Road.
So thank you for, for bringing that up. Of course, we had a preliminary discussion regarding. Of course, we had a preliminary discussion regarding fire trucks and accessibility. We'll be much more thorough with that as we get further along, and certainly want to comply with all of that. With regard to it being dark, there's also all the categories of lighting, which we will also comply to, so...
Also, so the one entrance off of Trenton Road where you're going to have your office, I know those four houses are kind of cut off from the rest of the, that's its own little section. I'm assuming you said, because you said you were planning on, you get a house, and so each one of your children, I'm guessing that that's an office and then four houses for your family?
Spot on. Thank you so much. Yes.
Yeah, because I'm not, I was looking at this, and I couldn't understand why that was cut off, but I, I get it now. All right. Sorry. Anyone else have more public comment?
John.
Oh, yep. Sorry.
This is William Brown, Bill Brown, a consultant to Ms. L. Hopkins and her family.
All right. Sorry, just give us one second, and then, wait. Oh, Mr., oh, I thought he was, I thought Mr. Brown was going to speak. Sorry. Well, we will definitely get to your public comments, Sarah.
Okay. My name is Bill Brown, and I am a multifamily developer. I've been Vice President of Multifamily Development for Toll Brothers, among other jobs in my lifetime. I developed the Edge in Lower Magfield on County Line Road, and I have an 800-unit apartment project in Lower Magfield, not in this state, but right up the road. I just had a couple of quick comments. One is about building height. A developer might flatten the roof of a three-story building to meet a building height, and that's not aesthetically a pleasing way to solve that problem. So I would just like to point that out, that many times the building heights are 3, are 45, 48 feet, and three stories are very commonly built in that circumstance. The other thing is, this is not a $900,000 townhouse location. It's a moderate-priced townhouse location. They'll be very nice, but they're certainly a positive upgrade for that area of the township. It will be a significant improvement on the ratables for property tax, as opposed to how it's zoned now. So there's a big positive side for the township in terms of property taxes. A townhouse like this, generally we track numbers of children, and we know that there are relatively few school-age children in a townhouse project like this, because even though they're moderately priced, they're small, they're three-story. I mean, we're competing with single-family homes, so we, we could do a study of where townhouse project children are going to school. Now we can actually do a count of the number of those children. So those are all things that I think are positive comments about the project.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Um, no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Jones, I'm sorry, Mr. Metzger, were you done with your public comment?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just, okay. All right, Sarah, come up. Please, please state your name for the record.
Frank Bright, Falls Township. I see this being a disaster on this corner. I mean, even though you have your business there, at 5:00 at night, there's a line up that Trenton Road, Tiberan Road, nobody can make a left or a right. People go into Old Falls to beat the light on Trenton Road to come up. Then you got the school on the other side with people picking up their children lined up on Trenton Road to get into the school, and you have two entrances and one exit, and it's a disaster. There's too much there for what property is there, and it needs to be stated for Falls Township to stay at two stories, not three. I don't give a rat's butt it's a garage underneath, but it needs to be stated on two stories for all the houses around there to comply with the way that things look. We don't need three stories and all that on that corner. That corner's a disaster right now without all that. If you knock that down the least half, then you may get away with at 5:00 in the afternoon of trying to get up Trenton Road and down Tiberan Road at that light, because none of them lights work together. I mean, all the way from Woolston Drive and Stony Hill Road all the way down to New Falls Road is a nightmare. There's just too many cars for that small area, and on that corner, it's, it's too much for that corner, in my opinion. Way too much. Cut it in half, then possibly, it's still going to be a nightmare, no matter, no matter how you look at it. I realize they want to develop the property to make a little money out of it, but that's ridiculous. You'll never be able to make a left or a right. If you come out, there can't be a left-hand turn. You've got to make a right and go somewhere else.
I believe you would be correct on that, but PennDOT actually would...
Well, I realize that, but I mean, what little cars are showed there looks like a 1950 video, not 2025 at 5:00, you know? That's, that's my opinion, but I'd like to see it just stay at two stories and think of the school across the street with all that stuff that's going on at that 500-foot area.
Well, thank you. This is also good feedback for them, too, because they, I mean, the part of the sketch is, so they get feedback from the township, the residents, and the board, and then they can go back and actually really put all the design into it and all that, so thank you for your comments.
I was just going to reassure with the same, that certainly we will do a full traffic study, and our preliminary studies have indicated that a lot of the townhome occupants don't go out in the peak of traffic, so it may not make it too much worse, and hopefully we can ultimately find ways to make it better. So we agree, and thank you for your, for your feedback.
All right. Is there any more public comment?
I'll let me choose.
Yeah. Just please state your name for the record.
Watermelon Man is my AKA name, Falls Township. I live right across the street from the high school. Been here for 40 years. You're going to have an issue with security on that area. You need to look at security, traffic study, as well as flooding. You're on a low area where Delaware River, you know, you're not too far from Delaware River and streams and everything there, and you need to have walkability for the dogs, for the kids. If you don't, you're going to have complaints, but security is going to be one of your biggest issues in that area. Check with the Falls Township Police Department and ask them about the security in that area. You'll be amazed. You've been here for a long time. Your children have been here a long time. You know all about it, as well as these gentlemen up here know all about it, security. God bless you.
That also does bring up a good point. I don't see any sidewalks on, on these plans, so...
The sidewalks were originally sketched on one side, and then they got removed and were, it's a work in progress.
Yeah, well, that, I mean, I just, I know generally in new developments, it would, it's, it is good to have sidewalks, so...
Thank you.
I just wanted to make that comment. I understand it's a sketch plan, it's not, you know, you said, they were in, they were out, you know, so you're moving stuff around, you're figuring out, trying to get an idea of what, what you want to create here, so, all right. Is there any more board comment?
I just wanted to clarify, it was just sketch plan, not an ordinance overlay, is that correct?
It is a sketch plan based on the overlay ordinance draft, so that you could illustrate what is, you know, if you read it on a piece of paper, you have no idea what something may or may not look like. This is done in accordance with the requirements of the draft ordinance that will be eventually submitted in either this form or some next iteration. But we thought, and I think the township encouraged us to come up with a sketch plan that would really show what we could do with this ordinance, under this ordinance, for your consideration.
Thank you. All right. If there's no more public comment, no more board comment. Thank you for presenting your sketch plan. Would you like any final word to say?
No, I think you've said it. We've said all we had to say, and you've given us the feedback that we're looking for. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. All right. We're going to move to item number six now, minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for minutes.
All right. Second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Have a good night.